Here's how crazy life is. So my last day in DC this past week, Thursday, I huddled on the house floor with Dennis Kucinich for about 20 minutes. I actually like him, he's a funny guy. And he is irate at Obama about sending troops to Uganda. Just irate. And he wants to raise your bill, say... You know, I voted with Kucinich two or three months ago on a couple bills to demand that we get troops out of Libya, or demand the President's gotta come and tell us why there are troops in Libya. But it got me thinking that every single week I'm in Washington, and I listen to certain people on the other side, not that we're all on the same side, and you just scratch your head and you think to yourself, "How in God's name can Sheila Jackson lead and think what she thinks?" And then I'm reminded every night when I go to bed in my office, in DC, on the floor, one of the last things I look at, honest to God, when I walk down the hallway and go to my office at night, is the lit-up dome. The beautifully white dome, Capitol dome. And I usually go to bed every night just in awe of this country. So Democrat, Republican, we're fighting like dogs in Washington right now. And it's gonna continue for a year. It's going to continue. Thank God we live in this country where we can fight. And the reason we live in this country that it gives us the ability to fight is because men and women have died for this country. Men and women were the uniform of this country. So, the second thing we always do in our town halls, either raise your hand, or please stand up. If you've served the uniform, or wore the uniform, and served this country, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you. Welcome! I'm gonna get into my little thing here in a moment, but let me start, and then I wanna recognize anybody else in the audience. I made a pledge to my district a year ago that there would be no more accessible number of Congress than yours truly. Nobody would hold more town halls in Congress than I would. We don't know the exact number right now, but I think we're hugging 90. 90 some town halls, and that number will double by the time they remove me from Washington. It's the most important thing I do. And whether I'm in... We were down in Sandwich, Illinois, last weekend. I'll tell you what I was doing down in Sandwich. In a room with just 20 people. We were in... Oh gosh. We were in Sycamore the weekend before, eight or nine people. I've been in rooms with 200, 300 people. Two weeks ago, I spoke at T-Conan-Chaunberg. Spoke to a rip-roaring group of about 6, 700 people. It doesn't matter the size of the audience. I rapped Melissa Bean over the head mercilessly during that last campaign because she would never, ever, ever do this. Get in front of people and let you fire at me. Let you fire at me. If you've got a member of Congress that can't do what I'm doing weekend after weekend, do not set me that relate. Dude, I love doing that.
Actually, we're not.
I'm just kidding.
We were hanging around.
I love doing that. I do that to my Congress all the time. If a member of Congress doesn't have the courage to do this, and truthfully, most of us don't love to do this, I like to do this a lot. Most of us don't love, so most members of Congress force themselves to do this. "Oh, I gotta go do another town hall, I'm gonna be a guy." Most members of Congress, truthfully, are that way. There are a lot of reasons for that. This is hard. This is tough. I gotta take questions, I gotta be on my game, I gotta be on my toes. I know it's being filmed and recorded, anything. I say it's gonna be used against me. This'll be a campaign commercial. "Oh my God, I don't wanna do it." That's what goes through Congressmen and women's heads. "I'm not smart enough." Tough. This is the most important thing I do. A big part of what the country's going through right now is a yearning for what we did about 200, 300 years ago. Getting us back to our founding principles. An old-fashioned principle is that you are my employers. You may not have all voted for me, and I think you might have. But I work for you, and you have the right, my dear, to send me packing whenever you want. How do I know if I'm doing a good job if I don't head in from my employers every time and I'm home and find out what you're thinking? There's a lot going on right now, and I can tell you! Being in Washington right now, it's like the quiet before the storm. From the minute I got sworn in in January, right away there were budget battles. CR battles. "Are we gonna fund the government?" And then along comes this debt ceiling, and then a balanced budget method. It was a constant fight for eight months. And then the debt ceiling comes and goes, we go home for August. And I can tell you, since we've been back in DC this fall, the 20 or 30 really hardcore conservative guys, we're depressed right now. It's eerily quiet. This supercommittee thing's coming. We gotta fund the government for the rest of the year. This big messy appropriations bill is coming. There's stuff coming, and we're nervous. So we need to pay attention. Before I get started, let me ask of the audience this. Are there any candidates in the room for any office? And if you are a candidate for any office, stand up and take a minute, tell the folks who you are and what you run for. Before you do it, hear ye, hear ye. I said this a lot during the campaign. It was a pain in the knee to run for. Anybody who runs for office demands your respect. You don't have to elect them, you don't have to support them, but when you run for office, you give up your life. You open up your life, right? Everybody knows everything about Joe Walsh. That's tough. That's tough. So whether it's county board, whether you're running for village president, you're running because you wanna go down to Springfield, why would you wanna go down to Springfield? Or you're running to go to DC, respect everybody who runs for office. Do we have any candidates in the House right now? Raise your hand. Stand up, youngster.
Hi, I'm Tom Leiber, and unfortunately, some people have to go to Springfield. We gotta figure what's going on in Illinois. Fire which county goes? I'm trying to educate as many voters as possible of the things that are going on. We keep hearing that the mall fire every time our property got used because of Springfield. All that money and taxes, quite a ton of it comes back in the house. Not very good, anyway. Anyway, I'm Tom Leiber, running for county board, and I wasn't talking on the air.
Thank you, Tom Leiber. Give it up for him! Any officials in the audience? Any Republican officials, any village officials, any, anybody? Stand up and identify yourselves.
I'm Nick Marchorato, I am a village trustee for the Village of Littahurst, and I'm the Lake Village County Republican Chairman.
Stand up, youngster.
I'm Steve Bishop, I'm the county representative of the Republican Party.
Anybody else?
Lillian Malanga, Antioch County Chairman.
I thought we were checking IDs. You had to be 18 to even enter.
You're lucky, yeah.
Such a politician. Such a politician. Anybody else in the room? The rest of us, then, are all the most important people. Let's talk politics real quickly. We know about redistricting. In about three weeks, we will know, in Illinois, if the congressional maps those dastardly Democrats drew stand. By November 18th or 19th, we'll know. Republicans filed a challenge. It's in court right now. Everything always seems to be in court. It's in court, we'll know in mid-November. When we filed our legal challenge, we gave to the court our own fair map. It is a darn fair map. The court may take our map. They may take the Democrats' map, they may draw their own map. Anything could happen. We'll know in mid-November. If, 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 if we have to live with this Democratic map, here's the deal. They drew a new 14th district. It basically starts... If I was pointing northeast, what direction was northeast, Steve?
Right there.
Right there. Was that right?
No, no, that's east.
Northeast?
That's east.
It starts over there. It basically starts on the Illinois-Wisconsin border, up on 94, where 94 hits the Wisconsin border. So it's about a third of Lake County. It's almost all of McHenry County. And then it swoops south into Kane, Kendall, Will, Summendupage, and Summendukal County. Folks, I was in Sandwich, Illinois, last weekend! When was the last time you were in Sandwich? Or Plano? Or Plainfield? Or Sycamore? It's a huge district. That is the new 14th district. I live in McHenry. I live in this new district. Most of my current constituents live in this new district. Basically, what the Democrats did to us Republicans is they either made our districts more Democratic, or they paired us up with each other. Before you get mad at Democrats, let's be honest. Republicans do this in the states they can do it in. They're doing it in Texas, they're doing it in North Carolina, and when a party overreaches, it ends up in the courts. We think the Democrats are overreaching. It's ended up in the courts. If we have to live with this map, I am running in this new 14th district. It's my home. It's a three-person federal court. Which is better. There's another Republican freshman that lives in this new 14th. A guy named Randy Hulken. If we have to live with this map, I'm gonna grab him by the neck and we're gonna spend the next five months campaigning all over this district. Randy Hulken and Joe Walsh are both good Republicans. We are very, very different Republicans. This is a Republican district. You will end up with a Republican Congress. Ain't no way Melissa Bean or some Democrats are gonna represent this district. It's a Republican district. You, this district, will have to decide what kind of Republican they wanna elect. You know a lot about me. You know a lot about what I've done the last nine or 10 months. We can talk about that. Suffice to say, and I'll answer your questions when we open it up, Hulken and Walsh are very different. So the district can decide what kind of Republican they want. It's unfortunate, but if we have to live with it, we have to live with it. Let me spend four minutes talking about one topic, then let's open it up. You know, every day when I'm in Washington, it's idiotically crazy. Here's my typical day. I wake up at 5:30 on that Aero mattress in my office. And I grab my change of clothes, and I walk through the tunnels down to the house gym. And I do a little workout, and then I shower and shave. There are about 40 or 50 of us that live in our offices. And then I'm back in my office by 7:30 or 8:00, and the day begins. And from 8 o'clock in the morning till about 10 at night, it's non-stop. We figured out, because a fellow freshman... What's that thing you hold when you figure out how much mileage you're walking? Okay. We had a freshman in July carrying one around him all day, and we figured out that we, on average, walk about five or six miles a day. Because you're constantly walking from your office to the hill to go vote, then to some other office building for a hearing, then back to your office to meet with somebody, then over into that building, way out off the Capitol so you can make money-raising calls. And you're constantly doing stuff like that. And then by 9:00 or 10:00 at night, you're exhausted and your day ends. Usually at night, there are dinners or receptions. I went to one last Thursday that was one of the most interesting dinner I've ever been to. About 20 of us House conservatives went to listen to Arthur Brooks. Everybody know who Arthur Brooks is? He's the head of the American Enterprise Institute. Fascinating guy. Brilliant economist. But he delivers his shtick with a real everyman kind of an approach. And he's working on this idea that we conservatives are... You heard me say when I ran, and you heard me say every day says, "There is a revolution going on in this country for the very soul of this country." If you don't believe that, I can't say that out loud. There's the door. Folks, this is not just an election. What got me elected last year was not just an election. Obama got elected, he did things, and the country woke up. We got up off our backsides and we sent people like me to Washington. And we are at the beginning right now of a fight. And it's a fight. Say that with a smile. It's a fight for what it means to be an American. We're fighting about the role of government, we're fighting about freedom, all of this stuff. And it's gonna go on a lot. We know those of you in this audience who believe in limited government, you believe in the marketplace, you believe in traditional moral values, you believe, most importantly, in freedom. You know we're right. When I listen to Democrats in Washington try to argue about things, I know they're wrong. We know they're wrong. But our side does a lousy job of conveying to the American people our side. We know we're right. And so this is Arthur Brooks, head of AEI, brilliant economist, and he's working on a thesis where conservatives need to make the moral case for what we believe. Why are free markets and freedom better than big government and socialism? There are really only three arguments you can make. One is the liberal argument, which is, "No, big government and socialism is better." And they make that argument. Okay, so now the conservative argument. What do we say? Well, typically, when conservatives are arguing for freedom, limited government, and free markets, what do we do? We pull out the latest study. Well, the statistics show... The numbers show... We get into statistics and evidence, and we try to document our case according to numbers. I'll tell ya... You all know I'm not the wealthiest member of Congress. How many people know that? I'm not even in the top 10. Pauline, put your hand up. If I had a nickel the last nine months for every constituent who said to me, "Man, Republicans are just so bad at messaging. We're so bad at messaging. We're right, but why are we doing... Why is Boehner doing such a lousy job, and why blah blah blah? We're losing the messaging war." And you can go home over your spilled milk and say, "Oh, it's the President, he's got that bully pulpit, and John Boehner just doesn't know how to talk." And you can come up with every excuse in the book. The reason we lose the messaging war is because we, God love us, we conservatives try to appeal to your reason. I'm gonna try to get inside your head, Steve, and explain to you why limited government is better. Why? Why free markets are actually better for the poor? We try to argue our messaging. Instead of, Arthur Brooks said, "We gotta make the moral case." So instead of saying that, "I know President Obama's jobs plan isn't gonna work because, look, he spent $987 billion on the stimulus, it created 93 jobs in the 8th district to the tune of blank per job, and this is what it did in the 16th district of Alaska." And then you've lost me. Why is President Obama's jobs plan bad? Because it's not fair. It's not fair. It's not American. In America, I always thought, I always thought in America, we rewarded effort. I always thought in America, we rewarded success. I don't understand why in America, we can keep people... You know, we argue about unemployment insurance. Should it be extended forever? What do conservatives do? Here statistically is why I tell you unemployment insurance won't work. Why we have to cut it off after a certain period. We try to make the factual statistic case. Man, morally, unemployment insurance forever morally goes against everything that's American. It hurts the poor. It doesn't help the poor. It's not fair. Because people are out there busting their butt to find any kind of job, and it's not fair to reward people who live on unemployment. That's not America. We reward people who tried. We wanna help the poor. And is it helping the poor, Mr. President, if we make unemployment insurance permanent? Does that help the poor? I've spent so much time working on school vouchers. I love getting in this argument with liberals. I could give you documentation after documentation as to why it works. It helps public schools improve if I let parents... If I give parents money, and I let them use that money to go to any private religious or homeschool they wanna go to, and they decide where their kids are going to school, I can argue with you till I'm blue in the face that that will make public schools better. The evidence is there. But why do that? Why do that? It's wrong that we don't let parents choose where their kids are going to school. Every parent, not just those who can afford it. That's wrong. And you know what? It hurts poor kids. I worked in the inner-city Chicago for five years. We're killing poor kids in this country because we are consigning them to hellholes. Schools that are hellholes. Is that good for poor black kids, Jessica Jackson? Why don't we argue morally? This is a country that, more than anything, values our right to pursue happiness. This is a country, more than any other country in the history of the world, that believes in fairness. And it's not fair to have the government try to create jobs. What's fair, what's fair is to let you succeed and try to grow a business and create a job. That's what we do. That's fair. We Republicans are afraid to argue with the President about fairness. I'll go toe-to-toe with him about fairness. Whose policies are gonna help the poor more? His or ours? I'll go toe-toe with him on that. The reason we're losing the messaging war is because we wanna get into statistics. We wanna prove, we wanna appeal to your head. And I can tell you, I'm not an expert on this, I wanna learn more, but most studies show we are a moral people. We lead with our heart more than our head. Liberals go at your heart. "Oh, God, I see it on the floor." We all laugh. When there's a debate on the floor, you know, all the Republicans sit over here, the Dems over here, and there's about a 15-minute debate when a new thing, a bill comes up, and we sit over here and we all concur ourselves. Within seven seconds, the Democrat who's gonna go down to the well with speed will pull out a picture, you know, a big picture board behind him or her, and there will be a picture of a poor grandmother who's homeless, or a little kid walking around in a diaper in dirt and rocks. And they do it, they pull it out. Liberals go right at your heart. The poor panda bear. The poor, oh, that poor grandmother who's living on steaks and stones, and she's gonna lose her Medicare. And then the Republican gets up and says, "No." Here's why. If we don't do something to Medicare, it will be gone in nine years. And we make the factual case. It's always good to have the factual case, but guys, we've won that. We've won that. We, on my side, and hopefully you're not all on my side, but on the side that I speak for, we need to get moral. We need to argue with Obama and the other side, and say with conviction, "The reason our side is right is because there's nothing more sacred in this country than my ability to pursue my happiness." And anything my government does to get in the way of that is right, is wrong, and is not American. And in this country, everything the government does should be fair. Argue with them on fairness. It's not fair to reward people who are not gonna work. That's not fair. And, final point, we Republicans don't cede the ground that we wanna help the most vulnerable around us. Why do we just assume that Democrats only care about the vulnerable and we don't? We do. I believe, and I think when you look around in the Third World, markets around the Third World, they help poor people more than dictatorships and big government do. You wanna get people up and out of poverty, ain't gonna happen with big government. If you wanna consign them to a life of dependency, that's what you're gonna get. We need to do a bad job of making the moral case. I'm gonna stop there. Remember, with my town halls, no rules. Well, the only rule, there's one. There's one rule. Respect everybody. You can say whatever you want to me. You can ask me any question you wanna ask me. But do it with respect and treat each other with respect. There's no viewpoint that's wrong. So, remember, you can ask me anything, personal, politics, or policy. One final thought. I bet in the news a lot the last two or three days is two days ago, I sent a letter, the first member of Congress to do this, I sent a letter to Eric Holder demanding he resign immediately because of that. Let me stop there, let's open this up. Raise your hand, any area we wanna go. Yes, sir?
I'm Charles Staley from Antioch.
Welcome. Thanks for coming up.
On the internet, it's passing around, RH Bill 4646, about 1% tax on all bank transactions. Can you explain that?
It's hard to...
Or, don't let it go through.
Again, this is a broken litany. Since we passed Obamacare, every single week in the last year and a half, we've learned something bad about it. And this is just one more coming down the pike. So yes, that's in there. And it's my hope that, like that 1099, when we were able to repeal the 1099 aspect of Obamacare, that we've got enough Democrats who will join us next year, probably happen early next year, where we will repeal that. And then in 2013, you've got a 3.8% tax on all unearned income. That's right there, Obamacare. Folks, there's scary stuff in that legislation. Now, we gotta repeal the whole thing, but in the next year, and I think I'm on the legislation co-sponsor to repeal that, I think we'll find enough Democrats. Because there are even enough Democrats in Washington who are really embarrassed by pieces of this. So, look for sometime early next year, hopefully we can repeal that. Send it over to the Senate. And in an election year, I think even the Senate may vote to repeal it. And then it goes to the President's desk.
Yeah, it refers to half the election year. Is that next year's election they're referring to?
We can deal with it next year. I believe it's due to take effect after the next election. Yeah, but we can still repeal it next year. So we can repeal it before it takes effect. And again, one important, bigger point. I don't know who you're excited about for the President. Romney, Perry, Santorum, Gingrich, who else is there?
Kane.
Why do I always forget about her?
Paul Ryan.
Paul Ryan, I know. Whoever the nominee is, Obamacare is gonna get repealed that first month or two when that President is in the White House. And if not, Congress will march on the White House. So, hopefully the whole thing will get repealed in 2013. Hopefully the court, Supreme Court, next year, will rule it unconstitutional. Other thoughts, guys? Thoughts, issues, questions?
Henry Matricus, I'm from the Heritage. I am a member of Heritage. For $25 a year, you can get on their email list, you can get a lot of literature. They just sent out F.A. Hayek's, The Road to Serfdom. I don't know if anybody else belongs to that group. It's a little 44-page book that was written in 1944, or I think the year was better. It's an economist that talks about how socialism, because it's central planning involved in there, and some people start revelling against the central planning from the government, it leads to tyranny. This is why we don't wanna have a big government telling us what to do. Because we will all eventually wind up being controlled by the central government. So there's always to go on freedom and less government. This is an excellent book I read, man. Everybody, it's only like 40, 40 some pages long.
Paul Ryan had a great speech this last week at the Heritage Foundation. He touched on some, he went at the president and said basically, shame on you. You are trying to foster everything that's wrong about America. Class warfare, dividing people against people. And he's right, he went down the right track. We have to continually be vigilant. And I'm accused by my wife. Does anybody know, I've got a master's in public policy from the University of Chicago. I don't talk about it much. In my, in my real life, I'm a policy wonk. Uh, I don't come across as a policy wonk, do I? No, because people will glaze over if I try to convince your head that our vision of freedom is better. We're beyond that. Folks, we're at war. I don't have time to read this study, do you? We're at war. I was in a meeting this morning with about seven or eight business guys. And it's always tough to talk to business, this kind of language to business guys. But I, I wanted to shake them by the lapels and say, if you don't get what I mean, when I say the country's going through a revolution right now, you're missing it. It is. Don't be afraid of it. Remember, you've heard me say this, thank God we're doing it. You have been asleep for 40 years. You have. You, me, we woke up, right? Thank God Obama got elected. Imagine if John McCain got elected. Obama ran that way, McCain would be walking down the same path. The old troll. He'd be walking down the same path. He called me a hobbit, I'll call him a troll. Same path, same path. We know that. This is a 10 to 15 year fight. Strap, strap, put your seatbelt down. This is going to be bumpy. And if I, I don't have patience for anybody, I don't have patience, who tells me, oh, I'm just so sick of what I hear out of Washington. All you're doing is fighting, and you're yelling at each other. Joe, you go on Chris Matthews' show, and you guys just fight, and you're all, and so this is what you're fighting about. No? This is worth fighting about. Men and women died about it. People died. How many years ago to start this experiment? We'd better fight to continue it. And if you elect to be political, I see it happening right now. If we do not elect fighters next year, and we send typical Republicans to Washington, we are going to lose. I won't give out his name. Let me just say this. The Republican leadership in Washington would love for me to be gone. I know it. I know it, trust me, I know it. The establishment would love for me to be gone. They don't want people like me in Washington. The Republican Party needs people like me, or we're losing party. That's what this fight's about. Thoughts, issues, questions, guys? Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Sherriff of the Democrats.
Welcome, Bill.
Related to Road to Serfdom, what can you do to bring the EPA back?
We've probably voted to repeal operations of the EPA and continue to put a spotlight on all of their egregious rights. Because they are egregious. This is no exaggeration. I've probably, especially during the summer, I think I visited about 80 small businessmen and women during the summer. And I don't think I'm exaggerating, when about a third or a quarter of those, literally after meeting with them for 45 minutes, would break down in tears. When they thought about what had happened to their business. A guy in Wakanda who took me into a warehouse where there used to be 30 people working three years ago, now it's him and a receptionist. And it's like he's showing you his home. It's like his home's been destroyed in a tornado, and he breaks down. And this is going on all over this country. And I will not miss words. When it comes to this president, I will not miss words. Shame on him. He has a target on small businessmen and women in this country. He doesn't understand how this economy works. I don't think he understands what pays this country greater. Go toe to toe with him on that. He doesn't. He's crippling, he's crippling the engine. The engine in this country that creates 70% of the jobs in this country, how come no jobs? How come no jobs? He's suffocating small businessmen and women. Remember when we had kids, and when the kids were bad, uh, we'd do a big old timeout, and we'd send them into the corner of the room? I can't say, we do other things too, but we'd give them a timeout. The business community right now has done a timeout. They are so convinced this president is hostile to them. They're sitting on their money, they're not growing, and they're not done until the next election. And I can't blame them. We've got to get this guy out of the White House.
Can you give me one example of the EPA regulation that you're talking about? I grew up when Lake Erie was on fire.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I'm a small business owner, and I own a small construction company. And since then, I've had to have, uh, the remaining four employees that I had go through an EPA training to become lead renovation workers. My companies had to become EPA certified. I had over 3,000 expenses, uh, last year alone.
$3,000?
And I'm lucky if I'm bringing in 3,000 a month in revenue. You know, it's not the same as it was in 2007. So we're, these are all new regulations that were never in effect up until Obama passed that one. In the stimulus.
And, and, and just to be clear, it lost, show me a show of hands. Maybe I shouldn't do this. Does anybody believe the government shouldn't have any role in regulating the environment? In helping to keep a clean environment? No, no, the government shouldn't play any role?
I believe it should.
Now, is there anyone who doesn't believe the government has to play a role in us keeping a clean environment?
Well, not the government.
Well, that's, that's an interesting question. Well, I'm saying the federal government. Let's talk to federal government. Who in this room doesn't believe the federal government should play a, a role at all in keeping a clean environment?
Only if it's about the interest of state.
Yeah, I know, but don't get. Point is, even if you polled all the Republicans in Congress, I don't know if anybody would raise their hand and would say there shouldn't be a role. What we fight about is that pendulum. Does the pendulum swing too far in a direction? And I think if you talk to most businessmen, I can say, I think, if you follow me around for a day, you talk to most businesses, virtually every business you would talk to would all say the following. They've seen a real uptick in regulations in the last few years. They're feeling very regulated. They feel like the pendulum swung too far. And so it's always a process of trying to find that appropriate role. Nobody in this country wants an unfettered market to do whatever they can with the environment. Yes, ma'am?
Is part of the problem, that's the EPA regulation, um, rules or regulations without congressional oversight?
That's a, that's a, that's a growing part of the problem. And this isn't the first president to sort of govern by executive order and govern by, uh, using his own powers to instill regulation instead of having to go through the legislative process. Republican presidents have done the same thing. And we should all be concerned about, because that's, that's a presidency, that's a president that really has a little bit too much power. If you, if you've noticed what the president's done this week, because he hasn't been able to get his jobs planned, and he knew he never would from the beginning, he's trying now to do things on his own unilaterally, like adjusting the student loan program. He'll do something with green companies again, that he'll be able to do without going through the normal legislative process. So that's a big part of it. But when you look at bureaucracies like the EPA, like all of them, uh, once they start, it's almost impossible to ratchet them back. And for those of you who want us out of Afghanistan, and I've been pretty public about this, I think we ought to be home now. It's just like, it, it's hard to ratchet a war back. It's 10, 10, 11 years now, and we're in Afghanistan, it's hard to pull that back. Once you start a government program, how easy is it to cut back that program, much less eliminate it? It's almost impossible. And so the bureaucracy has gotten huge. Yes, sir?
Can we change subjects?
Yes.
Is anything being done to reel in the courts? It seemed like, every other day, I read some court ruling that seems so absurd, uh, you know, gay marriage, uh, all kinds of issues that seem to violate the Constitution, but somehow they find some area of the Constitution which is not there, and they basically turn the Ninth Amendment all around, where if it's not specifically stated, the government can do whatever they want. Is Congress ever going to reel in some of these, uh, judges? They do have the Department of Pete, right?
Yeah.
They have this first vice chief.
Harvey?
They have the first vice chief. Gingrich has talked about.
I mean, this is, this is the, the beauty of the intricacy of the system that was designed. Is it can be a constant tennis match. The court can make a ruling, uh, Congress can enact legislation, uh, to try to overrule that ruling, and then it will go back to the court, and they can decide on that legislation. So it's a constant battle. Congress is always too leery of engaging the courts head on. I think, I think that our courts, especially our federal courts, and even our Supreme Court, the last 20 or 30, 40 years has been given much too much control. Uh, I think in general, our presidency, both Republican and Democrat, has gotten too powerful. Uh, the legislative branch has ceded a lot of authority. And they're so scared about going up against the courts.
But they're, they're making law by judicial action. And somebody's got to reel them in, they can basically have a legislative, or I should say, overcome legislature by some judge somewhere.
And you, right, and you've got to be bold enough to throw another piece of legislation right in their face.
A perfect example of the healthcare bill, Obamacare, uh, I flipped it up. Article 3, Section 2 of the Constitution says, "All cases where the state is party, Supreme Court shall have original jurisdiction." Which means basically, any case where the state is against federal government, the Supreme Court is the only authority. But yeah, we're having it tried in the states.
Robert Schumer's on a roll, like, if I may, uh, make a comment. Couple Sundays back, I made the press, Newt Gingrich had an excellent point where he said, "The Congress has the authority to call these judges before them and say, why did you rule this way?" The problem is, is Congress really needs to grow a set of cojones to do that.
Yeah.
This is our question, why they did something, it's not in the Constitution or whatever it may be, how they rule.
I can tell you right now, in looking at the other branches, Congress's focus is the executive branch. And there's so much there for Congress to look at. This fast and furious issue is going to be looked at in a huge way. Uh, Solyndra, and then the green jobs, all these green companies, this has taken off in a big way. Um, so Congress right now has their hands full in trying to put a spotlight on what this executive has done. There's just a real hesitancy to ever confront the courts head on. And then what happens is you embolden the courts over years.
So I just want to say that, I watched every one of the presidential debates, whether live on TV or on the internet, I watched them streaming live. Newt Gingrich has addressed this a couple of times. He talked about that in 1802, Jefferson fired half of, half of all the federal judges in existence. He said they didn't need them. He said that could be done with the Ninth Circuit out in, in California. He says they had the first streets, they had a judge down in San Antonio, Texas, and said people couldn't use God or the word invocation or benediction. He was going to jail the superintendent of schools if they used that in the schools. And he said that guy could be brought before Congress and into a hearing, that's how he derives his reasoning. Where is he getting that from? Then he could tell people that they don't have the right to free speech. So, I mean, there is ways that it can be done. He's been addressing that in several, several of these debates, because he was asked questions about that a couple of times. He brought it up.
Does your oversight committee also have oversight on constitutional gang of czars?
Yes, yes.
Two things on that. Number one, since he's what, 40 or 45 of them supposedly, but we don't know because he doesn't tell anybody. And, and nothing that I've ever read or seen in three years he's been in the presidency, has there ever been a printed piece of paper or a report from any of these czars that, that has been made public? And does that go hand in hand with the fact that since he took office, the federal limousine, uh, purchase increased by 240 so far?
There might be a relationship there.
G-A. G-A, I'll put that finger out. 240 limousines, brand new, added to the fleet since he became president. So he did jobs. Don't talk to me as back, you did a good job.
It's, again, it's, it's, uh, it's always troubling. Go ahead.
You spoke a while back at one meeting about attempting to look at, at the czar thing. And I haven't heard any more from anybody about bringing all this speed to the fire.
Now, I can tell you, our committee, uh, which has jurisdiction to look into it, it's been, it's, it's, it's been moved to number three or four or five of this. Uh, which, which again, isn't anything to laugh about, like I'm laughing about it. There right now is so much there to look at.
It's, it's against everything that the Constitution sets. I mean, that is probably one of the biggest things that he's.
And again, not, not started by this president, right? Not at all started by this president.
Two thirds of our federal government is against the Constitution. Where did you start?
It's always, right, but, right, right, right. Like everything else, he's dramatically accelerated. It's always important, remember this point. The Tea Party movement, however you want to call it, didn't jump off the couch when the president, when President Obama began to bail out companies and began to have a government involved in the areas that it didn't used to be involved in. George W. Bush, when George W. Bush began to bail out companies, uh, that's when the movement really launched. And again, the president, Obama, President Obama took it to a whole new frightening level. I can't say this enough. I'm a Republican. I'm going to go to my grave as a Republican. But the Republican Party is every bit to blame for the mess we're in now. If I'm telling you that we got three to four years to change the trajectory we're on, or I don't know that our kids and our grandkids can ever recover, it's not just the Democrats that got us there. And if John Boehner were sitting right here, I'm telling the same thing. Republicans have gotten us here as well. Yes, ma'am?
During Obama's speeches, his campaign speeches before he was elected, he wanted a militia that has as much money and as much power as our troops. And do you think he's still pursuing that? And how can he do it?
No, I think that, and again, we'd all heard inklings of that. I think that if this president's reelected, I believe there are things he's going to really try to do to make what he's done look like nothing. And I really do believe he's going to make a concerted effort to go after guns. I really do believe he's going to make a concerted effort to figure out a way to legalize 14 million illegal immigrants. I really do believe he wants to implement, figure out a way, talk about getting around the legislative process to implement car check. Uh, I really, really do believe he wants to somehow revisit Capitaine. There's a lot he wants to do. And all he's trying to do now is just come across as a fairly reasonable guy. But you give him a free pass again, watch out. Watch out.
Can you just, Tom Gray, Tom Lane?
Welcome.
I just wanted to just make a request as a Congress, we've got a concerted effort like some of these people mentioned, to actively look for judges that are willing from the bench to say, get out of here. I just want you to request that, if you qualify that's within your power, and never think of my power about it.
No, thank you. Look, it's, again, it's a great point. I don't mean to not delve down into it. Henry, you raised a great point. There's a lot that Congress can do that they're not doing. But we've been so conditioned for so long, and, and it, it, again, the last 30 or 40 years, books have been written about the imperial presidency, the imperial courts. Our founders designed this government, and they designed this branch to be the most powerful and the most accountable.
And we have. That is the reelected now, Congress is going around Congress doing this whole thing.
We are certainly far, far removed from that. And both parties have done that to us, no doubt. And I, look, we're going through an earthquake right now. And I, look, we're going through an earthquake right now because we're starting to talk about these things. This is going to be a 20-year battle. Get ready.
Do you think I'm going to survive that long, 20 years?
Yeah, because ultimately, hold on a minute, I'll come to you.
I agree with you.
Ultimately, the country are you guys, the country's not politicians. Ultimately, when it really reaches a breaking point, and I love talking to people who, when I say things like, "You know what? There could be people in the streets in three years." And it's why seasoned politicians just laugh at it. Skom, skom. We're not that far from that. And if this, if your political system continues to let you down, the reason I know this country won't be lost is because the people will rise up. The people will rise up. I promised you. Yes, sir?
Yeah, one of the problems, I think, is as I look around, the people that are very interested are mostly older.
They're all 20-year-olds, look at this.
They're hardly, this is ridiculous. We're young and hard, we're young and hard. There, 20 years from now, some of us are not going to be around anymore, and the youth that is going to be the ones to carry on do not know the sacrifice that the founding fathers gave. They do not know very much about the Constitution. They know very little about the country at all. I was educated under communism. Anybody who wants to talk to me, I can talk to them. I escaped from East Germany. But this country, in order to survive, we have to re-educate the youth so that they will elect the people that are standing for this country. That is the only way for this country to survive. There is an old saying under communism, if you read long enough in a red, in a book written in red, you believe that red is the only right thing. And that is the problem we are at.
Couple points, I think. During my campaign, when I held town halls, we had a better mix of ages during the campaign. I think you'll see it pick up again. But I absolutely agree with you. Right now, people in their 50s, 60s, and 70s and beyond are most attuned and most worried about what's going on. But again, here's why I have such great faith. Are we going to lose this thing? Are we going to lose this country? Think about it! I got elected. How did God say that I get elected unless this country took a big first step? I, I am so, when I'm in Washington, I get so PO'd every week because we're not doing 100 of what we should be doing. We're not doing 1,000 of what we should be doing. We got a government. If you get rid of all the trillions, get rid of all those zeros, get rid of them. Here's what your government did this year. Let's see how proud we are for our government. Your government is a family of four living in Antioch. Here's what they did this year. They made 21 grand. Okay, mom, dad, two kids. They brought in $21,000 this year. That same family spent $37,000 this year. Oh my God, how do you survive? Oops, there's one more thing. That family in Antioch that made 21 grand, spent 37 grand, has an outstanding credit card bill of $144,000. When you get rid of the zeros and you don't talk in trillions, and we don't think about a government, we make it a household, that's what your government did this year. And the great Republicans, you know what we did? We might have made that family cut $21 out of their budget this last year. Now! So you go like this. But if we weren't there, what would that town have done? Can you imagine if the Republicans did win the House? Nancy Pelosi is still your speaker. Just two things. We would have raised the debt ceiling three to four trillion dollars in the spring, and nobody would have known what the debt ceiling is, because there would have been no debate, no discussion, no fight. And we'd be spending money every single day. So that family living in Antioch would have made 21 grand, they would have spent probably 48, 49,000, and there'd be no limits on what they'd do. So as much as we beat ourselves over the head, believe me, we beat ourselves over the head. I got about 20 or 30 friends in Washington, that's it, the 20 or 30 hardcore conservatives. And we sit in a room one or two nights a week, and we think, "My God, how are we going to get our leadership to do what's right?" But imagine if we weren't there. Oh wait, Hugh here. Anybody who's wearing a Joe Walsh shirt should always get the first question. I can't, I can't believe I overlooked that. In fact, you get five questions in a row.
I don't have five questions. Mine is more of a, kind of a statement question. A gentleman over there brought up about how we're all, you know, a little bit older group, and where are the young people? And what's always bothered me is, you hear about all the college campuses, how they have such a liberal agenda. And I've talked to a lot of people and young people who have no clue what's going on. And that bothers me, and you are a teacher, and I'm wondering, how does that liberal agenda get infused into the college system?
Well, because liberals tend to be teachers. This isn't, no, this isn't rocket science. Look, most people who are conservative, who believe in free markets, where do they tend to go work? Let me say it again. Most people who are conservative, they believe in markets. They go work in business, because that's what they believe in. Makes sense, right? You go out there and you make money. Journalism attracts a different person. Education attracts a different person. We will never, ever, ever have their equals in those professions. Ever. Well, now let me take that back. We could if we opened up those professions. If we truly opened up our schools to the marketplace, go back to school vouchers. I think you'd see people like me and other people getting into education. But now, who wants to go into education when they're just going to be forced to join a union if you don't believe in them? So that, that, those professions attract those people. And it, from, they always have for all eternity. Yes, sir?
Mr. Walsh, you just hit on the union. I guess in a perfect world, a fantasy maybe of mine, is, you know, I'm a retired firefighter. And as a, as a probationary firefighter, you sign your papers and you're in. When I was on the fire department, it was, our fire department union was Canada and the United States. Now, since I've retired, I'm here in this Canada, United States, and Mexico. You know, the firefighter, everybody looks at firefighters and cops, teachers, all is, is, you know, Democrats. But I'll tell you what, all that money that I put in there is you have to put in out of your check. And they're taking all our Republican money. And now you, are all three countries pushing these presidents in here like this? Or, you know, I mean, in a perfect world, I would love to get hired and find out that there's a Democrat bank account, and there's a Republican bank account, and the Republican bank account's taking our Republican firefighter and Pyramides money. They're putting it toward, where, where's the fairness? And what are you guys going to get on top of this? And maybe just say, "Hey, look, no more, no more contributions from any kind of corporations or anything anymore, just private sectors. And we will research and make sure that's how it happened." You know, every one of us can put in money and put a president in the House. But if you got ComEd that's not paying taxes and is riding on the backs of a president, you've got all these other, the unions in three countries, just the firefighters' union. And, you know, you don't want to give up all the benefits and the protection you have with the union, and, and it just happened to be what I wanted to be in life. Where, where are we going to fix this? You're not going to fix nothing until we fix that.
How do we fix it?
We got, we got to somehow see if we can have some sort of fairness between the Houses and the Senate and, and Republicans and Democrats. They should say, "Hey, look, let's scale this down a bit. Do you really need this much money to become a president? Can't it be like the old days, you know, you're going out like town hall meetings, or, you know, standing out there like Abraham Lincoln, talking to people? I mean, does it really have to be trillions of dollars, the guy with the most money wins, and three countries backing up a Democrat? Just with the fire, that's big money."
Well, you're not going to like my answer. I, I, when it comes to politics, I never, ever think money's the problem. Let me start there. But the person with the most money doesn't always win. And every time this country tries to come up with some new law to reform or limit money into politics, what happens?
It gets worse.
Well, I, I would argue it gets worse, but the money always finds another path. Like, we limit how much each one of you individually can give me. "Oh, great idea, that'll make everything more fair. So you can only give me 2,500 bucks." Great idea, makes sense on paper, but then what happens? Well, then you have a group of 20 conservative guys in Antioch who really like Joe Walsh. So what do they do? They pull their money together, and they pull hundreds of thousands of dollars together that they can't give to me directly, but they can start a group called Citizens of Antioch. And that group can independently try to help me win. So now, in our elections, we got on both sides, George Soros has his groups, the Koch brothers have their groups, you've got all these huge groups out there. Karl Rolf has his group. Because we've limited what you can give to candidates, and we've limited what you can give to parties, what happens? People go elsewhere and they start their own things. So I guess the point I'm saying is, you can never get money out of politics. And every time politicians try to, try to, they actually make it sweeter for them. Because it, once you're in office, it's really easy for money to come to me. When I'm a challenger, it's real tough to raise money.
How do we get inside, how do we get inside the firefighters' fraternities and police and, and say, "Look, the Republicans want their money to the Republican Party"? How do you do that when they're taking all of our funds and putting them where they want to put it?
That's, again, that's...
That's important. I've been a Democrat all these years. I'm not a Democrat, but look where my money's going.
I know that.
You know the Indiana one where that lady had said she got out of the union because her husband was running for what? What was he running for? Senator or something in Indiana, just that last, that last election? That she got out of the teachers' union because of that.
But who's going to, who's going to...
She was voting against, she's getting money, it was going against her husband.
I agree with you. But who's going to make that union change? Do you want government stepping in and telling the teachers' union, "Half your dudes got to go to Republicans and half to Dems"? Who's got to make that decision? You do! The union membership! So how is it ever going to change? Look, here's one thing I know. A lot of trade union guys supported me, the rank and file. These guys are pro-gun, they're pro-life, great guys. And they are so upset with their union leadership, because their union leadership said, "Vote for Obama." They gave all their money to Obama, and we're all going to be working and making a lot of money. Three years later, none of the rank and files working. So the rank and file trade union guys are ticked off. It's, the only way this is going to change in the fire unions and the teachers' unions is when the rank and file membership goes to their lead, wakes up, one, and goes to their leadership and says, "Things have got to change." You don't want government getting involved in that. You don't want government telling a corporation who they give their money to or a union. The union's got to change from within.
Well, what about, what about if the money, what if, what if you guys found out that it was illegal or if it's not, the money coming from the portions of Canada and the rest of the country to fund a supposedly American-born president to be...
That is a great point. And so, and so, all of, any violations of any campaign laws constantly need to be looked at and investigated. That, that's a whole different can of worms. I agree with you.
I mean, I don't think a dime of the outside money should go anywhere like that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And thank you for your service. Because when it comes to policemen, firemen, everybody, these are first responders. Thank you for your service. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, I understand that there is a law that says the Congress must work within a budget, and yet they refuse to for two years since Obama got in. How come that there's no repercussions? No one gets fired? What's the consequence?
Actually, it'd be an interesting notion, what if we all were fired next week?
Well, go golfing, baby.
The Senate hasn't passed a budget in 900 days. The House didn't pass a budget last year, so we had to do it this year. I, I, I agree with you, but like, like everything, none of this is going to change unless, until you change the makeup of your representatives. So when I tell you, right now, you've got 20 or 30 of us who feel just like you do, we're almost enough to have an influence. If you double our size next year, you can see some of these things done. But we're, we're, the focus has got to be getting these kinds of, I'm going to say for now, Republicans elected, who will put these ideas ahead of their party. Otherwise, these things will never get implemented. Look, I came to Congress, look what I've done. I turned down my health benefits, I turned down my retirement benefits. I don't think members have a term like that. I can only serve six years. I don't think any member of Congress should serve longer than six or eight years. Hold your question. I don't think members of Congress should get a pension. So I, I introduced legislation calling for terminals. I've got nine members of Congress who've co-signed that legislation. I'd love to put forth a bill that said, "No member of Congress can get a pension." How many people are going to work with me? So how are you going to change that? You got to send more Joe Walshes to Congress until there's a number enough and we can change things. It's better not be a complicated one. No. But she always brings someone.
I know. Okay. So how about Tuesday, October 27th, the super committee?
Ooh, I thought that was going to be a picture of me and Joe Walsh.
No, no, no. Here. They're talking about this decision, and want all of my medical records, and I said, "I'm excused and don't settle." Only took the point that I show up with a sugar diet, as a sugar dietetic. Why should I have to be insulin dependent to take a three times a day when I've been doing this now for almost seven years? And because when I was in the hospital, it was 582, I almost passed out at, at Condel. Then it has gone down to third stage.
Do me a favor, do me a favor, because you've come to two town halls. Where do you live?
Antioch.
Say that with pride. Antioch!
I wish I could. I've lived here 42 years, and I've seen a lot of changes I don't like.
Do me a favor, do me a favor. And I think I might have said this to you at another town hall. Can we please make an appointment for you to come into my Fox Lake office? And we can go over your particular case. I'm going to have you sit down with Erin or Michelle. Michelle, can we make sure that we bring you in next week to talk about your specific issue? One thing I'm always on the lookout for is this, and guys, look, in many ways, I'm an outside minded professor, but I, I'm bombarded with a thousand things a day, and, and I don't want any of them to fall through the cracks. When it comes to Medicare, big thanks, Michelle. Now, look, Ball is in your court. Michelle, if she doesn't call, what's your first name?
I call over.
What's your first name?
Blaine.
If Blaine does not call Monday, call. You call, call, and hold on a minute, call Monday and make an appointment. Come into the office so that you can give the specific details on what you're going through. We are trying to document, I am in my district, everything that businesses have to put up with when it comes to the government. I also want to document everything that individuals put up with when they're dealing with Medicare.
Look, they're taking out $400 billion.
Well, first of all...
It'll, it'll fall apart in seven years. It'll fall apart in a year, they keep raping us.
Here's the deal, now, to answer your broader policy question, kiddo, nothing's going to happen with Medicare. That's a prediction.
They started Obamacare from Medicare money.
Do me a favor.
I want that.
Don't worry about, don't lose sleep over the super committee. Don't. Do not lose sleep over the super committee, okay? I want to know what you're dealing with, so that when you have a potential problem, I can help you. When it comes to Medicare right now, don't lose sleep. You're going to see a thousand plans in the next three weeks on Medicare, defense, all this stuff. What's the super committee? Well, right, no, but, 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 understand. Is that the president? Who is it? If it was, would you have picked up?
Boehner.
No, hey, no, no.
...generated, the employer would pick up insurance for the people that they say, what, 7 million that don't have insurance. I...
I know, I know that, but you've got to listen to me, Blaine. I'm going to say this... I'm gonna say this as clearly as I can say it, and I love you to death, but if we don't take this thing, call Medicare, let me finish. You're giving me a look my mind is... I know that look, Elaine. If we don't take this thing, call Medicare, and change it, reform it, fix it for younger people, I am telling you, it won't be there.
They're robbing us, why?
I, 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 I know, but it needs to be changed. We need to fix it and improve it.
That's...
Quickly.
Now, that's what, why don't you do something about welfare? Why are we supporting illegitimate children when it's just one generation after the other generation after the other generation? They keep getting away with it.
Who's getting away with it?
They keep getting away with it.
Oh, they keep getting away with it.
Yet, we're a Christian, there's some Jewish people, Muslims, whatever, I mean, uh...
All God's children.
Yeah, right. But these are illegitimate children, and I keep having illegitimate children on welfare, and we pay for all that.
You're right, you're right.
Why should we fight for Medicare?
We, we should, we, you're right, but understand, when it comes to welfare, still something our government needs to cut and improve, but we've made huge strides.
Why don't they tell me to keep their pants on?
We've made huge... Cut that tape!
Whoa, baby.
Next, hey, Elaine, I am going to... Elaine, make a note. Elaine has been rounded for the next town hall. Let the record show everybody, she's been rounded. Josh, Josh, hey, hey, I got you.
Did she say plants? She said plants, didn't she?
Yeah, she said, what about those plants?
Yeah, pick those plants up, yeah.
Question. You better change the subject.
Five hundred twenty-eight billion to a company to produce hyper vehicles in Finland. One quarter billion dollars to Nissan to help them develop and produce the leaf in electric car. How much money went to Telstra to produce a vehicle in a foreign country? Steven Schuh needs to get tossed as well, not only Eric Holder.
There's the next letter to go out.
So, briefly, Solyndra's in Tiffy's, or another company. Tiffy, Tiffy Iceberg. Nine hundred eighty-seven billion stimulus, and about three dollars and twenty-three cents went to jobs. So, you go figure. Other thoughts, issues, or questions, guys? And I really appreciate everybody coming up. Let me toss.
I just wanna ask you, anything going on with the three billion Dodd-Frank? Only reason why is because I got like three more credit companies cut my limits in the last two weeks, so...
They heard you were writing for Congress or... I was just trying to...
When it comes to Dodd-Frank, the name of the game right now, and Dodd-Frank's every bit as dangerous as a rock. The name of the game is delay. What Congress is trying to do is delay all the rule they need that they wanna put into place for the implementation of Dodd-Frank. So we literally are trying to kick everything as far down the road as we can. I think that after another election, again, if you put the Republicans in charge, and we hope they do right, that repealing the entire legislation will pick up a lot of steam. There is currently a piece of legislation to repeal the whole thing. I'm a co-sponsor. I can tell you, if I get sent back to Washington, I think it needs to be looked at every bit as closely as it's about Medicare. But right now, all we're trying to do is delay its implementation. There are hundreds of bureaucrats in Washington, right now, just drawing up regulations to make life difficult. We gotta, there's only so much, we just gotta kinda force them to wait. That's all we can do with Dodd-Frank right now.
The federal legislature grew by eighty-three thousand pages last month or something like that? It's insane.
It's, it's insane. Now, so let me lead you with this thought. I'm gonna leave you with two thoughts. One is gonna be broad, and one's gonna be focused on me, because it's all about me. Broadly, next November's the most important election of your life. It's also the easiest election. Let's be honest. If our nominee is Romney, 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 you know what, it's almost military. I've got a long day. I've got a long week. I've got a long ten months. If your nominee is Romney, Perry, Bockman, Santorum, Gingrich, Kane, whoever it is, whoever it is, everybody in this room, if you're inclined to vote Republican, everybody from Tea Party to establishment, to everybody in between, has gotta work their tails off. You know me, you know where I am philosophically. I'm a Tea Party conservative. If Mitt Romney is my nominee, I will run through that wall to get him elected. I wouldn't have said that three years ago with John McCain, but now I know. I know that this president, and I don't know him personally, but I know and I believe his policies are destroying this country. He needs to go. Second point I'll make is this. Again, we'll find out in three weeks if this Democratic map holds. If the map holds, you're gonna have me probably running against another Republican freshman. We're very different, and you will have the opportunity to see that difference. And if, 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 if my establishment doesn't want me to go back to Washington, if my leadership doesn't want me to go back to Washington, then it will be a classic fight of all the rest of us grassroots folks who understand that if, if you don't have people like me in Washington, we're in a big heap of trouble. God bless you, have a great night, and I need a drink. Thanks.